Okay, well, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, since we set one agenda item, I don't think you need approval of anything. Here today to interview our first superintendent candidate, Mr. Dr. Russ Ziegler. So, well, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll go on this script here. You know, as you know, today we're interviewing candidates for Richardson Taylor superintendent position. So I hope you enjoy getting to know a few people with the meet and greet. Trust it. Ralph did a good job.
Oh, yeah.
Bringing back and forth together here. Okay, so, uh, we've got an hour and a half is what we've allowed, and then we do have another interview.
Sure.
Today, so, um, so each member of the board here, we're going to take turns asking questions. They're all kind of side questions.
Okay.
So we'll each ask three in a row, and you've got all the questions in front of you. Um, so, um, and then hopefully we've allowed about 10 minutes at the end of the interview for follow-up questions from you or whatever you wanted to. So, so we're starting basically 3:30, so, so basically by, by 5:00 we'll work to get back to us.
Sure.
Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Anybody have any, any board members, anybody have any questions or comments before we start? We do have in your packets, um, we've got our interview questions, which we can kind of, you know, tally, and you can make your own notes at that point. Alexis did give us a scorecard for all, um, all candidates, and she recommended not trying to fill that out during the interview process, just wait till we're done and fill it out at your leisure, if you'll, so.
And then maybe should we said, there's live stream on camera, is that?
So, yes, we are, we are live on camera, so yeah.
Okay.
We can put back to your hair.
Tell me if I'm old.
So, yeah, um, so we're recorded and livestreamed, all our, all our meetings are on now, so, yeah, so I've sent everybody full disclosure on that. Um, so, okay?
Perfect.
With that, we'll, we'll get started with our interviews.
Okay.
So, um, could you please give us an overview of your professional experiences, your beliefs on public education, and why you're interested in being our superintendent?
Okay, uh, professional experiences, I started as a teacher, math teacher, graduated from DSU back in 1996. Spent three years in Colorado, uh, teaching at a junior high there. But we wanted to come back, be closer to family, so we moved, uh, back to North Dakota. I spent one year in Turtle Lake, and that was, that was a hard year for us as a family. I was the tech coordinator, the, uh, AD, pretty much assistant principal, math teacher, study hall supervisor, anything else you can add on to that, council, K-12 counselor, forgot about that one. So that was, that was a tough year for me. Uh, I wanted to get back in the classroom for math, so I moved to Headinger, and I spent seven, eight years in Headinger as their high school math teacher. From there, I interviewed here, actually, for Richardson Taylor principal, and that was in 2007. So I was principal here for approximately eight years, and then in 2015, I went to, uh, be the state director for advanced ed back then, it's Cognia now, so I had my hand in the, the school improvement process with that. From there, I went to the Department of Public Instruction for a little bit as an assistant director there, and then, uh, I got a job for the North Dakota Council of Educational Leaders, and I was there approximately another eight years. And then, uh, currently I'm the superintendent on Elgin for the last two years. This is my second year there. Oh, and I soon taught here in Richardson. Somebody asked, you know, why, why Richardson, and it feels like it's kind of always calls me back. Uh, my dad did a lot of construction in Richardson when I was growing up, and he's built a few houses here, and it's just been kind of the, the home away from home, I guess. So, yeah, I knows your dad pretty well, my dad does. So, uh, public, my beliefs in public education is, uh, I guess we're the backbone of, of the community, uh, backbone of, of the nation. Without public education, you'd, you'd have more of a divide, I believe, between the haves and the have-nots. Anybody can go to a public school, you, you know, they, it's not based on how much money you make or, or where you're from. Everybody's welcome at a public school, and I wholeheartedly believe that. And we have to treat everybody the same, as in giving them the options. I mean, they're not going to get the same, of course, curriculum or the same, same type of information that way, but, but they have the same opportunities, I guess, in, in a public school system. And why am I interested in being superintendent here? And, uh, if you would have asked me that while I was the principal here, I would have said no. I, I don't want to be a superintendent, never want to be a superintendent, don't want to worry about budgets, don't want to do any of that. But after working at NDCL and working with superintendents and doing some professional development with them, it was, it was something that always came back, and, you know, what would it be? And my first year in Elgin last year, I, I realized that I was, I was missing out. I, I really enjoy it, the superintendency, I enjoy the position, and, and I just think, uh, coming here to Richardson is, uh, Richardson Taylor would be a, a good, a, a good place for me. I told my wife before I came, I can, I can see myself, uh, spending a long time here.
Okay, so, thanks. Just a quick follow-up on, you said you, you spent a lot of time at NDCL.
Yes.
What was your, kind of what was your job there, what did you do?
Okay, uh, we had a couple portfolios that I had, so it's the North Dakota Council of Educational Leaders. So NDCL is the professional organization for principals and superintendents. So it's, it's, it's not a union, it's a not, non-for-profit, but that would be, uh, the place that does, uh, conferences, professional developments for principals, superintendents. It is also the place where, uh, we would give legal advice for, for those individuals. Uh, my portfolio is mainly with the principals, since that's what my experience was, was giving professional development for principals. During that, I gave crucial conversations, uh, a few times. Educational leadership was another course that I, that I oversaw. And, uh, and then every other year, of course, our, most of our time was with the legislature. So we did a lot of testifying and a lot of advocacy, advocacy for public education in North Dakota and, and working with that, so, yeah.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Okay, um, question two, based on what you know about our district, what do you view as our greatest opportunity for improvement?
Sure. Uh, I, I talked to a few of the teachers down at Taylor, and then I talked to some teachers here as well. One thing that I asked on at Taylor was opportunity for teacher collaboration time, where they can get together, do some data discussions, really get together and, and work on, uh, individualizing instruction, I guess, for the students. And I think that would be one area. I know when I was here previously, we did late starts and early releases to try and hit that time, and, you know, and that, that isn't going on now, which is fine, but I think this still needs to find some, or find a time where it's during the teacher's day that they can get together and collaborate to, to do what's best for the kids. So I think that's one opportunity that I saw, just from my visit today.
All right. Okay, if selected as our next superintendent, how would you work with the board to establish a dynamic shared vision for education that reflects the students' needs and community priorities?
Uh, I think the first question I would have back to that would be a strategic plan, if, if the Richardson School Board has a strategic plan and is, is it active? If it's not, then that would be the first thing, is getting a strategic plan that we can follow, and, and all of the decisions that are made should go back to the strategic plan and what the vision is. Uh, if, if we can't tie it back to that, that's, that's already made our decision, then we shouldn't even be discussing it. So with that plan and that vision, we need to keep going on that same level and, and making sure that that's what we're following. Uh, so that would be the first step. Next, I think would be, uh, really, I, I truly believe also in board retreats, uh, getting the board, uh, talking about what's needed in the district, what, what I can do to help with that. Uh, I still firmly believe that the administration's role is to remove barriers. Uh, if we can remove barriers and let teachers teach, uh, to the best of their abilities, I think that's when, when the most education is going to happen. So I feel like principal's job is to really know what's coming up, what's, what barriers are in front of those teachers, and then it's my job as a superintendent to make sure everything is following policy as we're removing those barriers and making sure that, uh, the teachers are, can do what they're hired to do.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
The school board is committed to increasing student achievement through a rigorous curriculum and encouraging high standards for all students. How would you communicate these expectations to parents, students, and staff?
I think the, one thing that, I mean, it's, it's said a lot, but modeling, I think, is huge. Uh, when, when an individual comes into a school and they see the teachers acting in a professional manner, they see administrators acting in a professional manner, they know that the students are foremost on the, the thoughts of everybody at the school. That's really going to show to the parents that, uh, academics is important at, in this institution, whatever it may be. I think also having that, the time available to, for teachers to get together and talk about individual students is huge. The students, with that, the students will know that somebody is watching them, somebody does care about how they're doing and what they're doing, and it's, uh, it kind of, it solves, it kills two birds with one stone, I guess, because, you know, a, a student isn't going to learn if they come to a place where they feel like no one likes them or nobody cares about them. So we have to cover that, we have to cover that ground first before they're going to start learning anything. And then that high expectation, students are going to follow whatever expectations you've set out. If they're high expectations, they're going to rise up to meet those expectations, and if it's low, they're going to go down to meet those expectations. So, uh, having those high expectations is very important, and to do that, I think setting those high expectations is hard at first, because, uh, that, you're always going to get pushback, and you're always going to have students saying, well, I can't do that, or I'm not going to do that, or sometimes as administrators, you're going to get teachers saying, I can't do that, or I don't want to do that. But we still have to help keep those high expectations and, and hold the individuals accountable for their actions. I, I think back to even here as, as, as principal, there were numerous times where I wish I would have done a better job of, of, I don't know what the right term would be, but of holding individuals to the expectations that I had, because now I realize that not doing that, I was not holding the, the, the high flyers, I was not showing them that I care about what they're doing and what they're doing as well. If I don't hold the people who aren't doing the job to account, then those people are going to get frustrated. So you want to make sure that you hold everybody to account, the high flyers will be happy that you're holding them to account, because then they know what they're doing is, is on point and, and, and a good thing. So communicating these to, to parents and students and staff, as I said, I think modeling is going to be one. The other is, uh, communication, whether it's online, uh, Facebook, uh, I know that's an old people's term now. Instagram, X, I suppose would be another one. But, uh, showing what, what we're doing, showing the good things. I, I think a lot of times schools miss out on, on telling their stories, especially in North Dakota, where so, uh, humble, I guess would be the word, that we're, we don't want to brag, we don't want to say what we're doing good, but then if we don't say what we're doing good, everybody else is going to talk about what we're not doing good. So we need, we need to get that message out, we need to get our story out about how we're doing and, and what, and what we're doing, so.
When working with people, how would you describe your preferred relationship with them? What values do you appreciate most in a team environment?
I guess my preferred relationship, I'm huge on building relationships. Uh, I think that if you have the right relationship built with an individual, they'll do whatever you ask. I look at coaches, for example, uh, past coaches, current coaches, I mean, even here at RT, and also nationally, where if you have a coach that builds the correct relationship with those players, they're going to run through a wall for that coach. Same with, same with teachers. If you can build a, a good relationship, positive relationship between administration and teachers, they're going to do the same thing, they're going to work on their, their butts off for you. So I, I guess this kind of goes into my leadership style too. Uh, I, I would say I'm more of a servant leader. I'm going to get in there and get my hands dirty with you, I'm not going to be, uh, sitting out and, and delegating everything, there's times where you have to delegate, of course, and, but, uh, I want to be in there, I want to be part of the, the action per se and, and, and be in there with them. The values I appreciate most in a team environment is collaboration and safety. Uh, this goes back to the communication. Uh, everybody needs to be, feel safe in there, so they can make a suggestion without feeling somebody's going to belittle them or derate them for whatever their suggestion is. Uh, we need to have an open communication, whether they think it's something I'm going to not like, or whether it is something I am going to like, we need to have that discussion. Uh, I truly believe that more heads are better than one. Uh, one person doesn't have all the answers, so, so that collaboration and that teamwork is very important.
How do you set goals for yourself and staff? How do you hold yourself and your staff accountable for student achievement goals while also balancing the demands for uneducated?
That kind of goes back to what, uh, I was saying earlier with, uh, collaboration time, making sure the teachers have time to really look at, uh, the data, look at what they're doing in the classroom, and, and make sure that all the students, every student is being, uh, taught the, the way that they should be, not all the same way, but as each student is an individual. I also believe that holding myself and the staff accountable is, is really sharing that with the board. Uh, that's, that's one thing that I know a lot of superintendents have a tough time doing, is having those data discussions with the board. Uh, for example, down in Elgin where I'm at now, they've, they've never had that before. It's always at board meetings, we're talking about buses beans and, and basketball, uh, we're not talking about students, whereas, you know, flip that, where the board should really be looking at the achievement of students, where are these students going? What is it looking like as a district? And not necessarily individual students, but, you know, where are we going? And knowing that's going to be talked about at a board meeting is automatically going to raise that up to, to accountability, where you're going to have your, you know, the board is looking at that information and, and can hold you accountable for that. Now, I'm not saying that we want to use that as a, a negative for teachers either. Uh, I truly believe in growth, uh, everybody, we, we have to have a, a growth mindset. Uh, we're not here to, to push anybody out, we're not here to, uh, be negative, we're here to help everybody do the best that they can.
Well, if I could ask a follow-up on that, give us a specific data that you maybe shared with the board and, and perhaps how you helped manage that, where it sounds like it maybe led into having some tough conversation, but might appear negative, and then you just tried to direct the positive out of it.
Sure. Uh, the example right away is, our elementary school in Elgin is a TSI school, I'm not sure if, are you familiar with that? Yes, no?
No.
Okay. So a TSI school is targeted school for improvement, so what happened for our elementary school is we had, uh, it was in math growth. So our students in Elgin last year, uh, their math growth was less than the highest TSI comprehensive. Those are the schools that have consistently scored lower than 90% of the other schools. So when our school scored lower than the highest TSI school, that automatically puts you in targeted school for improvement. So that, and during that process, you really have to look at your data, you really have to look at, you know, what, what was the cause for that, for, for that, uh, scores to go lower? Uh, ours was in math, it was in the upper elementary grades, so we had a, a starting point to look at. So the data that we would use is the, our interim assessments, so down there we use the Northwest, so the NWEA. Uh, we also do some star reading and star math, uh, but of course, everything by the state is based off of the state assessment. So then you have the state assessment data to look at as well. And I guess what, what we look at is, is our NWA scores in line with our state assessment scores, or are we just blowing the NWA out of the water, but our state assessment scores are, are low? You know, and if that's the case, why is that the case? Is it that our curriculum is more aligned with what NWEA is asking and not aligned with the state standards, or, you know, what are some other variables there? And again, it's, it's not a teacher blaming thing, this isn't, it's our students, it's not their students, so we want to make sure that, that when we go through this, that the teachers understand that it's not, uh, a blame and shame, it's more of, A, this is where we are, this is what we have to do, and, and we're going to work through this together. Uh, one thing that we found, uh, while doing that, that research is that the year prior, our state assessment scores, we dropped like 30 points, and it's the same kids. I mean, Elgin doesn't have a high turnover of kids rate, so then what caused those same kids to drop 30 points? And, and a lot of it was, uh, testing environment. So recently, Elgin went one-on-one, and doing so, like, they, they used to go into computer lab, they used to test in the computer lab, and so you'd have a teacher walk in in the computer lab, students, this is different than a regular test, this is something that, you know, might mean something, where now when they went one-to-one, they just tested in the classroom. So it's more like, oh, this is just another, another thing that we have to do. And, you know, and the teachers were comfortable in their classroom, they're not walking around as much, so we had a lot of students guessing, or just clicking through, and, and that was a lot of the things that dropped us down. Uh, this year, we really focused on testing environment, making sure the students understood what the test was, how important it was, and we have students in the NWA, because we haven't had the state assessment yet, but they're, they've grown on the NWA just leaps and bounds, just because of that small shift in the testing environment. Uh, so we're hoping that carries through with the, the state assessment when it comes later this spring.
If I could ask you this more, how did you get to the point where you figured that out of, that it was the testing environment? Tell me about that.
Sure. I guess a lot of things was, uh, when they told me how they tested, I don't, it just kind of hit me that it's not, it, it wasn't really a, there wasn't any, I can't even think of the word, my brain went blank, emphasis.
Okay.
It was just another day, we're just going to do this today. Whereas, you know, those, those state assessments have an effect, and they have a huge effect on districts and, and, uh, and, and what we can do and, and the money that we get. So we want to make sure that our students are set up to succeed in those state assessments as soon as, or as much as possible. Uh, we definitely don't want to teach to the test either, but we want to make sure that they're, they're set up to succeed, and one of those is just making sure that their testing environment is there, and, and we communicate to the students, oh, why, why are we testing? What is the reason for this? And, you know, for most students, when they know that, they're going to try their hardest, so.
What steps will you take to develop trust, high morale, and positive relationships with school personnel?
Uh, building relationships, building those, uh, positive relationships, getting to know the staff, and, uh, inside and outside of school, I guess, knowing what they enjoy doing in their free time, and, and it's so important, relationships are huge, uh, between administration and staff, between administration and the board, between staff and students, I mean, between everybody. Uh, as I said earlier, relationships are really the foundation of, of what happens in a school. Uh, you can definitely tell when you walk into a building, if relationships are built, and what the culture of the school is, and what the morale is. It's a lot different when there are no relationships and everybody's in their own silos, or if you come in and it feels like a family. Uh, it's, it's completely different in both instances, and I would almost guarantee that the one that feels like the family, their students are achieving more than the ones where it's just a silo and they're just here for, to come to school. So, uh, down in Elgin, we have a, a very high, uh, free and reduced lunch rate, we're over 60%. So, uh, a lot of those kids don't have a, a good family life, so we try and pick that up, so we're, we are their family. Uh, a lot of students don't have food over the weekend even down there, so we provide backpacks and, and do what we can to help them sustain, and, you know, and we've had a couple teachers this year say, why don't kids want to leave school? I mean, we have some kids that lay on the sidewalk crying when the bus comes because they don't want to go home. And it's, I mean, it's sad, and it's, it's because they feel welcome here, they feel safe here, and, so, and, and that's what's needed.
Very good. Explain how you encourage and incorporate staff input in planning activities, and then provide examples of staff ideas that have been implemented under your leadership.
Sure. Uh, I guess most recent one would be in, in Elgin, and we, we started a PLC process. Uh, they've done it in the past, but, uh, we started reorganizing it, uh, making it more of a true PLC and less of a PLC light, or, or whatever else you want to call it, where, where when the teachers meet, they have to have a, a, a vision, or they have to have something that they're working towards. It's not just for them to meet and, and discuss, uh, what they did over the weekend, or what they're going to do that evening. It's, you're working towards something, and that's where the data comes in, using that student data to make sure that, that every student isn't, or that there aren't any students being left behind, or, or, uh, falling through the cracks. Uh, I guess another example would be from here. Uh, one thing that I, I would like to say that I started, but I, I truly didn't, was the leadership team. Uh, so while I was here as principal, we started a leadership team, and then that was a, a nice way, where as an administrator, I could go into a group of teachers and talk about, hey, this is what I'm thinking, and get their feedback, and, and, you know, is it going to work, is it not going to work, should we try it, should we not try it, maybe we can tweak it this way? And, and that was huge. Uh, we, we saw a lot of good things come out of that, that leadership team, uh, through that process, so.
How can a district actively recruit employees? What part have you played in the improvement of recruiting and retention of employees in your previous roles?
Okay, that, I think, is going to be every small school's, uh, trouble in, in the coming years, is recruiting, recruiting and retaining, uh, good employees. Uh, I guess the part that I've had so far has been more on the retaining. Uh, we need to do what we can do to retain the teachers that we have. Uh, if we retain the teachers that we have, we don't have to do as much recruiting. Uh, and that, again, goes to growth, helping, helping everybody get to their highest level. Uh, to recruit teachers, I think one thing that helps is, especially in today's world, teachers talk to other teachers, uh, in other schools. So if, if they talk about how good RT is, and how good they're treated, and, and what we're doing here, uh, the Blue Ribbon School at Taylor, for example, that, that's awesome, that's a recruitment tool right there, because other teachers will look at that, hey, they're a Blue Ribbon School, you know, that'd be some place where I could possibly work. I mean, and, and having those successes is huge to recruiting, to recruiting other individuals for that. And then getting them is, you know, and, and how, how do we retain them? And I think that, again, goes back to relationships. You have those good, positive relationships built between everybody, and, and they don't wake up in the morning and say, oh, I gotta go to work again. Instead, they work, wake up in the morning and say, hey, I get to, I get to go into school today and I get to do this stuff, so I think that's, that's huge in the retention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What is the most challenging operational issue in school districts today, and how do you approach these challenges?
I, the most challenging, I think, in, in small rural schools in North Dakota is funding. Uh, since funding is based on the number of students, it, it's really set up a wall between schools that have a lot of students, like your Bismarcks, your Fargos, Grand Forks, and schools like Richardson and Elgin, who have enough students, but they, they don't have enough students to get what the bigger schools are getting, uh, as far as technology, as far as, uh, the different types of education, the different, uh, the different CTE courses, for example, that, that, uh, larger schools can offer, smaller schools can't. So I know small schools get a, get a weight on their funding formula, a little bit higher than the larger schools, but I don't think it's enough. Uh, so I think one thing- So I think one thing is is going to the legislature and trying to figure out how do we educate all the kids in North Dakota equitably with a funding model that is based on students? Because in Elgin, we're bare bones teachers, but we have classes. Some classes have eight students, some classes have seven students. So do you combine classes to have one teacher? But then if you combine classes, they're not getting the same education as if you keep them separate. So getting it, so these smaller schools are getting the piece of the pie necessary to at least compete with those larger schools is is one of the things that that is a huge operational issue. We have schools, Elgin's one, Underwood is another, where our main building is the original building. Elgin School is going to turn a hundred this year. And it's just, I mean, and they've added on and they've added on. But it's it's still not, if you look at a Bismarck, oh, I guess Bismarck High is probably the oldest school there. But Bismarck High now doesn't look like it did a hundred years ago, where our school, our school pretty much does. I mean, you walk up the stairs, you can hear every creek in the woods, stairs and and everything else. So having that equitable and not equal, I mean, I know smaller schools aren't going to get the same amount of money larger schools are, and we don't need the same amount of money. But we need a proportionate amount to make sure that our students are are taken care of, I guess.
Tell us how you would guide a school district in developing a budget, specifically how a district should determine its priorities and accounting for unanticipated expenditures. What level involvement should principals and other administrative staff have in this process?
Okay, I think that goes back to the first one about the strategic plan. Our strategic plan needs to entail the facilities and needs to entail everything. So we know that, hey, our roof is going to be this many years old in two years. That might be something that we're going to have to replace. And and have everything on the table with with that strategic plan and that timeline. So we know what could go wrong this year and what could go wrong ten years down the road. And and make sure that we have those sets and we're and we're ready to go. And that also includes, I think, a lot of, a lot of times it's forgotten is salaries to make sure that, you know, we keep up with the salaries too, because that's going to be huge with retention and and recruitment as well. Everything needs to be a part of that strategic plan and to make sure that 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 we have it set. Once we have it set, then the trouble is sticking to it. It's going to be hard when your strategic plan says one thing, but then you have another thing come in and say, well, this might be the great thing, and it it's going to be tempting to go for the the next great thing. But sticking to what our strategic plan says is is huge to make sure that we're we're staying in our budget to make sure that that we're going to be fluid for for years to come. Do principals and other administrative staff, I, yes, they they have to be involved in that process. As a board, as a superintendent, we know the general functions of the school, but without the principals, we, I mean, a lot of things we don't know. Without the janitorial staff, a lot of things we don't know. It just happens because that's their job, you know, and 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 we're not sure, you know. This year, you know, maybe we need to scrub out the boiler or get the furnace going, and that's a five-year deal. So we have to include others on those on those to to make a a good decision.
How would you ensure that the school board is informed on important matters?
I think the a good relationship between the superintendent and the board president is huge. There has to be that good relationship so the superintendent and the board president can have those candid talks about what is going on, what are the issues facing? And then the board president can can address that to the board. I think another area is committees, to to have regular committee meetings on on items that come up, whether it's transportation or or finance or negotiations, whatever it may be. To have those regular committee meetings, and that's another way to keep the board informed on on what is going going on in the school. And another thing that I do, I I send out weekly superintendent notes to the board. So every Friday, I send out a message saying, hey, this is what happened this week, this is what's going on, just to keep the board informed. And and that's mostly general stuff. I'm not going to get into the heavy stuff like I would with with the board president. But that's, I guess that's how I've done it in the past.
What do you see as the difference between career technical programs and college readiness programs?
ACT scores. No. I think they're both very important. We we spent a lot of years focusing on college readiness. And then now we're suffering a worker shortage in in CTE areas. And my fear is now we're going to push too hard into CTE areas and we're going to see a shortage in college readiness. So I think you have to treat them differently. Every student is going to be different. Every student is going to, you know, decide what they want to do with their life. For example, my son, my oldest son went four-year college, got a history history degree, music minor. He's a dueling pianos performer. That's what he's doing for his career. So there is his history degree. Where my youngest son went to lineman school at BSC. He spent two years as a construction lineman, decided living out of suitcase wasn't for him. So he joined the union and is now an apprentice electrician for Skills Electric. And he absolutely loves it. I mean, so there's, there's two kids that one went CTE courses, one went the the higher ed course. And it's, it's really hard. I don't want to push a student either way, but I think the best thing is through the choice-ready program also is to make sure that whatever way they decide, they have the ability, that we're not shutting doors on them. To to make sure that they can do whatever they need to do. And that's even three or four years after they graduate. Do they still have the ability to say, hey, this isn't what I thought, I'm going to go to this route? And is it going to be a hindrance for them that, let's say, they went the CTE route through high school, they didn't take the upper-level math, now they want to go into college? So how much of a hindrance is that going to be? Do they have to take those extra maths or they, before they even get into college? And what we can do at a high school is make sure that they understand that before they go. And make sure that that they know that, hey, if you're going to switch, you still need to take this. And and give those opportunities for for everybody. I don't know if I said that straight enough. It's kind of chasing the tail.
Do you think it's important for all the schools to take the ACT test?
No. Standardized tests, and I don't get along. A standardized test for me is, well, it is what it is. It's a one-shot, one-day, one-day thing. It it's really doesn't show what a student knows and what a student is able to do. I'm glad that colleges now are looking at other things besides the ACT for for their enrollment. I think that's huge to to start doing that. But we we live in a testing world. We live in an accountability by testing world. So we still have to do what's required as far as the the ACT or the interim tests or the state assessments. And and those are important as well. And we just have to make sure that our students are ready for those is the is the most important thing.
Describe how you communicate and engage with students.
That's the funnest part of the day, being with students. Currently, when I'm there, which is most days, I I greet them all at the bus when they come in. We're fortunate, we have pre-K through twelve schools, so they all come in the same door so they can meet every student as they come in. So that's, that's one thing, making sure that that you're there. And that, I don't mean during the school day, I mean at activities, I mean at the music concerts, at the speech meets, at at whatever is going on, that that you're there, students notice. Students notice what teachers are there and what teachers aren't. And and that's huge to, again, build those relationships and that trust. Communicating with the students is also respectful. Students still have to know that you're the superintendent, you're not their friend. Which is like principals are the principals, they're not their friend. But we can be friendly. We 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 can have a good rapport with students and there can be some back and forth. But there there's definitely has to be a line of that you don't cross this line. I guess being out there, being in the hallways, being being seen.
Tell us what your idea of positive district culture is? And what actions will you take to build or improve the culture in our district and inspire trust in the community?
I guess my idea of a of a positive district culture is, when I said earlier, when you come in and it feels like a family, where where you see smiles on people's faces, including the kids. If you come into a school and everybody's frowning with their shoulders hunched, it, you know, it's a doom and gloom kind of place and it's not good for anybody. So being that, having that interaction with the students, having that interactions with the staff is so important. The actions that you take to build and improve culture, again, it's modeling. Some days, I don't feel the best, I don't want to go in there. But when I'm greeting those kids at the door, they're going to see a smile, they're going to get a hello and a good morning and no matter how I feel. Some people call it fake it till you make it, but you have to, you have to show the students that, hey, this is a good place to be. Another way, we, the culture down in Elgin wasn't very good when I came. I think following through on what you say is huge, also in building a culture. If if the superintendent says that they're going to do something and this is what we're going to work on, then that needs to be followed through with. If if you just have a a lot of empty promises and and things that you intend to do, that's that's the quickest way to to kill a culture, to kill morale. So follow through on what you say and and make sure that that everybody, again, is held to high expectations and and that we're here to help each other.
What are the most important first steps a student, a superintendent should take in a new district?
Get to know the cooks and janitors. And the office staff. I think that's the huge one. Also is the the superintendent/business manager relationship is huge with the first steps because they're going to be working closely together on pretty much a daily basis. So that's a huge step to start building that relationship. The next thing is, superintendence is kind of hard to get to know kids right away because your job usually starts in July, whereas, you know, when the kids aren't here. So it's having, even going to and being seen in the community during the summer is a huge step, even for community members. And you know, you you go into the the public picnic or whatever it may be, and you see people, hey, that's our new superintendent. So just be in there and being available for people is is huge. And it's a huge first step that that they see that you're there and that you care about the community. Another thing is, when a teacher comes into work in the summer or whatever else, introduce yourself, go up and, you know, and and start talking to them about about what's needed. What do they wish they had? What do they, you know, what do they feel is is missing or lacking? And also what's going well? I mean, if something's going really well, I don't want to come in and change it. That'd be unproductive. So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So the next thing, I guess, is is seeing, building that relationship also with the the board president. Making sure that the board president and 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 the superintendent are are on the same page and thinking about the same things. And that doesn't mean we're not going to have disagreements, but if we have disagreements, we can get through them as adults and and work through those. The next thing, I think, and that goes along with the business manager, is to see where we are budget-wise, see where the finances are. Another area is policies. Elgin went through the School Board Association policy rewrite, but that was back in twenty nineteen. And they updated a few of their policies, but we're way behind. So I mean, if that's something that that needs to be the first thing is, what are our policies? Are they up to date? Are they good to go? Because that really leads, it helps us make the decisions that we make. So we, that's another thing is to look at that policy.
We must be close to updating our policies. We should.
I asked Miss, I asked Miss T, she said, yeah.
I said, we have been updating them, but Mr. Belz has been looking over more, but I mean, getting better.
It's always something. Things change all the time, too.
Yeah. Yeah, just this last legislative session, there is huge changes.
So. So, okay, well, that's the formal question. So last is, do you have any questions for us? Whatever you feel like asking or discussing.
See, I got until five.
We have, yes. Yes, you rolled, you rolled through these pretty good, so, yes, we do have, we do have time to. Feel pressure to rush out of here by any means.
Well, I asked the one about policies already, is, you know, where where are we with policies? I guess the other question I had had was with and it might be a better question for the principals, but with the schedule and and do you think it is a possibility to get that collaboration collaboration time built in, even if it means early start or late start, early release? Or some schools do like a a Friday afternoon, they release early. So something like that, because I think that's very huge to get the time for teachers to to do that during their school, during the time that they're supposed to be here.
But we have professional development days, right?
Right now, we have one a month.
Yeah.
So you have to decide if.
I'm thinking weekly.
Weekly. That's something that you guys have to talk about. I was right now, monthly scheduled.
We used to do the early release, late starts. And then we just, we thought it was more productive to do like a whole day.
Right. And I think for PD, that is, that it, that is a good thing. But for like collaboration and stuff for
Right.
to to really look at that data if you're only looking at it once a month.
We have brought in subs for different sections
Okay.
and had those subs, you know, like this week, these teachers, this week, these teachers, this week, these teachers. And then we would rotate and then have worked together that way. That hasn't happened a lot in the past couple of years, but I mean, that's an option, but it's something that we have had.
Well, I know it's hard too for families because, oh, Monday, I gotta do something with my kids, I can't go to school. You know, when they, when they usually do or whatever it is, I know that's hard too. So trying to find that that balance to to make sure.
That's what it's all we're on here to.
So is it something that you did establish in Elgin recently?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Working on it. Well, we're working on trying to find a, because the same thing. We, yeah, we have two daycares down in Elgin. If we did a late starter and early early release, some kids would have no place to go. So it would be very hard. And I'm assuming a lot of places are like that because there aren't enough daycares in places, so. So in trying to think outside of the box to try and, and subs is, you know, is a good idea also.
You seem passionate about it. Did, have you seen some data or somewhere where where you saw this model that it just worked out really well or?
I think the solution tree is the company that really started the PLCs. And and they have. And and they have a lot of data on how when teachers get together and discuss students, achievement goes up.
Okay.
And and that's, you know, and that's what they'll all tell you. But it has to be a focused discussion on students, not just getting together.
Well, I guess I would say the answer should try to be yes if we can figure out the logistics of it.
Right, right, yeah.
So, yeah.
When you were thinking about your scheduling, was it week, like, consistency and during, like, like each week consistent? Like, was there, like, always a Friday afternoon or, like, was it always a early start or?
I'm not, we're, currently, we're debating, since we are such a a small staff, we have 20 teachers. We're thinking of three teachers and getting subs in. But then that would be a consistent day. So on Monday from nine to 10, this group is gonna meet and subs will cover that. And then after that, that, those subs will cover another group where they can meet. So that's kind of what what we're thinking currently, just because of logistics of late starts and early releases, and it's really tough to do. Especially smaller schools, so. I guess one question, and I know it's not the case here, but your new heating and heating system, that's all natural gas? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
We don't have a coal boiler.
We do.
It's not fun.
Can you shovel the coal or?
I think it's a
I have, yeah.
Would you say it's a nice storage bin that it's in, the coal?
Yeah, two of them, actually, they're very nice, yeah.
That's as far as I went.
We have them inside, too, so.
Oh.
Does it freeze?
Yeah, but it's fine.
Yeah.
That helps, it really, it really does, yeah. No, everything, natural gas, everything, I mean, all this facility is all, brand new.
Well, yeah, it's brand new.
Some things, you know, working well, but Taylor, we're getting, building-wise, in pretty good shape. We're looking at a new system for the Taylor gym right now. School's got new boilers, all natural gas.
I guess the question I always ask in an interview is, is what do you need? What are you looking for in a superintendent?
Long-term.
Kind of switched roles.
Long-term.
Long-term.
Well, and I'd say by, you know, you know, by how we picked a few of these questions, you know, we I, we like that good, that good community culture, good school culture. You know, and you really, you really hit on that pretty good, you know, where, yeah, people wanna come to work. People like being here, and you know, teachers feel like they have good, you know, like, their ideas are being heard or good input. Yeah, that's, that's good stuff.
I think I'd like to see some staff unity. Big piece, yeah.
Well, that was another question was staff unity. When I was at Taylor, one of the questions I asked them was, you know, how often does the superintendent get down to Taylor? And I know in the past it hadn't been very often, and one of them, one of the teachers said when Dr. Kelly, or Dr.
Dr. Peters.
Peters was here, he'd go over when the elementary principal came up here. So then there was always an administrator down there. And I guess I wanna ask the board, I guess, what, how do you feel about that? What are you expecting in that, that relationship between the superintendent's time in each of the buildings?
I think it's important to have exposure to both facilities, you know, it's, and fair on top of that. You know, there's, there's a lot of students there, like, there's a lot of students here, and I think they all deserve the same time and the same resources that, you know, both schools, you know.
I mean, I agree, I think it's important that, yeah, that that effort is made to, you know, have some time there.
Right, absolutely.
You know, and and be seen, like you said, be seen by the kids, you know.
Well, and even if you take your computer over and sit for a day, whatever, you know, if you know you can do something from Taylor for the day, then
Yeah.
sit in Taylor for the day.
Yeah, maybe it'd be fun to greet kids in Taylor in the morning, you know.
Yeah.
When they, you know, even even just that, you know, for the first part of the day is, I'm sure would be helpful, but yeah, it's a good.
I guess what I'd like to see on that, my expectation would be that there's enough time spent in both buildings, that that staff the anti of this would be staff saying, I never get time to talk to superintendent.
Sure.
Right, I never find that opportunity. And not hearing that and those opportunities being presented would be something I'd like to see.
Maybe they'll start saying, oh, I see him too much.
Well. That's, like you said, it's a bonus.
I really don't have any other questions. I mean, I'm kind of in a weird predicament because I've been here before, so.
That's a good predicament, you feel a little more comfortable.
I do, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Except when somebody in the stands, come on, Ziegler! Then I don't feel very comfortable when I'm roughing.
Yeah, they know what I mean.
I'm way more laid back.
You must have a lot of experience with all of us. I'm, I'm a different fan, too, when my kids are playing.
Yep.
It's easy to sit there.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Just tell me something, you said that you oversaw the state, the Cognia, the Advanced Ed, right? On, on the resume, under competency, I guess this just struck me, on under Cognia, you scored that then as one of your lower competences, what? What, or is that?
I did that, I scored it lower.
So good at everything else?
Yeah, I wanted to mark them all, wanted. No, I did that because it it's changed a lot since I was there.
Oh, fair enough.
So like I said, when I was there, it was 2015, and they were still Advanced Ed, and the processes were a little different than they are now.
Okay. That, that just struck me, so.
Yeah, yeah. And in, at NDCL, we didn't do that either, so, okay, we didn't have a, an improvement process like that.
Sure.
All right, let's see.
No.
Fair to discuss, it's, it's I just noticed that I have closing remarks here. That, we've got a blank out, basically says, we'll be making this, a decision after this round by a certain date. And I actually don't know what, how we're gonna do that or what that is yet. I would guess early next week, if we can, I don't know, if you get what board members think, but you know, as far as round one. I have a good answer for you there right now.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm are you expecting, are you under, any certain timeframe of of things or you need to know by?
I guess just to be fair to Elgin, the sooner the better, so then they can start looking.
Sure.
Is is the only timeline I have, so.
Okay, well, thank you for answering our questions. We had, we had a little, little time to answer what few questions we had, and so you, you asked everything you're looking for, so. Is there anything else you wanna share with us that we haven't, if you wanna share now?
Any other questions you have, any questions from the teachers?
I don't think I've yelled at you at any games.
More of a statement.
It's not yelling when you're right.
That's what I always think.
From the bleacher, you see it way better.
If you're a fighting. Yeah. Yeah.
If reference is easier, but we would.
That's right.
Yeah.
We need more.
I was gonna say, if there's still a little shortage on, I'm sure, it's, yeah, it's, it's still.
I think the Dickinson Association is gonna be down to nine next year.
And that's all classes, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's yeah, that's a lot of that.
Yeah.
I think for the guys that are doing it, that's a lot.
That's the main reason that boys and girls should be at separate seasons.
I agree.
Oh, sure, yeah. I can spread that out a little more, for sure. Okay, do we have anything else for Mr. President? You got to tour both schools and meet everybody, so.
Thank you so much. No, I would if I had. No, thank you so much.
All right, well, thanks. Yeah, I sure appreciate your time as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nice to meet you.
Yep, same. Yep, you bet.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep. All right, we'll see you later.
See you.